Now we're recording.
Now we're recording, okay. A call to order, this is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health on the November 16th, 2020, 6:00 PM. The Hampton Board of Selectmen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting besides us? I don't see anyone. Someone, what's that, what's that down the bottom there? Someone waving? Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020.
Is it fixed?
Will I adjust the camera?
Just tilt it up a little bit, tilt it down a little bit.
Tilt it down a little bit. Down, down, down.
There we go.
Mary Ellen, gotta go this way.
Tilt it the other way. No, the other way.
They see her.
No, that's me turned the other way.
They don't see the names. So they wouldn't see you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Put the deer under the table. The June, the minutes of the June 22nd, 2020. Way back then.
Back when we had.
No, wait. Go back now.
We completed with the corrections.
All in favor? And then we have a revised August 31st, 2020 meeting. And revision involves Westbrook two closing. Our attorney just wanted to have the certain wording that we had all voted in favor of the documents that were presented. And that's the only change there, I believe.
I'm sure you leave all the documents from Westbrook two for our successors and take their space here.
It won't be over.
Motion for the revised minutes of the August 31st, 2020. All in favor? The next item on our agenda, we have the, Kelly is here, our principal assessor, the annual tax classification hearing. Kelly, are you there?
I'm not seeing her. She called me, she was coming in via Zoom.
Well, we said, we said 6:05, so. You could, we can't do the tax workoff program until that is right. How about the highway department interest at the transfer station? I see Mark here.
So we talked about that last week, that Mark is concerned about with the upcoming solar project, that some of the space being used for storage at the transfer station would be compromised. So Bob has had an opportunity to go up there and look at Mark's utilization tomorrow. I'm going up there with Mark as well after our meeting with the architect. And then we hope to have a report back to the board next week of if something needs to be done, what can be done, what are our options? Fortunately, as you know, they're not putting the panels up next week or the week after, so we have some time to work out here. That's where we are with that. Does that sum it up, do you think, Mark?
Yes, it does, John. I understand there's, there's no plans yet. I just want to bring this up again.
Right. So we understand your concerns and we're going to make sure they're covered before any panels go up. And that's the key part right there.
Yeah, very concerned.
That did come up. And thank you, Mark, for the thing was, Amoresco was concerned about the turtle habitat, if you will. One thing that did come forth is that because we do mow the cap, the biologist who went up there said, well, then it's not a habitat because those need to be natural, undisturbed areas. So the number of acres that are going to be required for mitigation will probably drop. Mark is researching records to show how often they mow, et cetera. And that's going to help. The number that I think Bob had told us about the possible.
Twelve point two, I believe, or twelve point three acres.
Based on the original equation. Now, the biologist is the one who actually said, no, no, if this is not natural, if you mow this cap, and as you know, Dick Hatt used to go up there and bail it, then that number is going to go way down because this will not be turtle habitat area. So that'll help us. We probably will not need to find a second property to bring into a conservation restriction. So we'll no more.
Our principal assessor now joined the meeting.
Kelly, hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening, how are you?
Good, good. Want to take us through this? Want to take us through this?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. So I'm joining tonight remotely with the Board of Assessors and our associate assessor, Jane Ferrantino. The purpose of tonight's tax classification hearing is to provide information to the Board of Selectmen regarding the tax rate options that are available to the town under the property tax classification. Excuse me. All of, all of our values for the real and personal property have been approved by the Department of Revenue for fiscal year 2021. And our town's valuation has increased from just under $630 million in fiscal year 2020 to over $673 million in fiscal year 21. We had over $11.5 million in new growth. And the rest of the increase was due to an increase in the market analysis. Our new growth was very high this year, which was mainly due to our new solar facility on Mill Road, which just came on the books for fiscal year 2021. That, that alone added about eight and a half million in new growth. Excuse me, I have something in my throat. So tonight, there, there are four votes that are required in order to determine the share of the levy to be borne by each class of property. So first would be deciding whether or not the town would like to adopt a single or a split tax rate. Adopting a minimum residential factor of one would result in a single tax rate. Adopting a minimum residential factor of less than one would result in a split tax rate. And it would be one for residential properties and then a second higher rate for the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Historically, Hampton has adopted a single tax rate. The second vote has to do with an open space discount, but the town of Hampton does not have any properties currently classified in open space. The third vote is for a residential exemption. And this exemption would shift the burden within the residential class onto higher-priced and non-owner occupied properties. This has only been adopted in a few communities in Massachusetts that have a large number of vacation homes. So that's usually more like around the Cape. And the fourth vote is for a small business exemption. This exemption would shift the burden from qualifying small businesses to other commercial and industrial properties. Out of the 40 commercial properties, fewer than 10 may qualify for this exemption. And the one who would directly benefit would be, if for any of the properties that qualify would be the owner of the property, not the business itself. So I did send over some material. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review it. Excuse me. So I sent over some figures just showing the, the options. If you, if a single factor of one was adopted with an estimated tax rate of $19.67 per thousand, that would be for all classes, residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. The select board also has the option of shifting up to 150%. So as you can see in, in the chart that I sent, I, I sent examples of a 125% shift and a 150% shift, just showing how that would impact the tax rate for each class. And underneath that chart, you will see the average residential property and the average commercial, industrial, personal property, property. So that is showing the difference in tax dollars if a shift were to take place. Just showing the difference in the savings for the residential and how it would impact the commercial and industrial properties. Is there anything on that? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have a question. So the, the, we, we increase, new growth was like $11 million. And the rest of the, the rest of the full fair cash value is for reassessment?
Correct, yes. So that's based off of the market.
Okay. So last year, our tax rate was 2015. If we adopt a single tax rate this year, it'll be 1967.
That is.
But still, people may see their, their bill go up because their houses have been revalued?
Correct, yes. That is, oh, I'm sorry, can you see me? Okay, I'm sorry, I lost my video, but as long as you can see me and hear me. Yes, that is correct. So the values have increased based off of the market. Properties in general are, have sold for much more in calendar year 2019. And that's what our fiscal year 2021 rates are based off of and our valuations. So that is correct. The property values have increased. And we, because of that and the amount of new growth captured, we estimate the tax rate to go down quite a bit, but that, but it still could be an increase in the tax bills.
How much would you estimate the value, average valuation?
Of what, I'm sorry?
The average valuation, how would you estimate how much that will up percentage-wise?
So, well, so for.
If I had a 300, if my house was valued at $300,000 last year, what would it be valued at this year?
So the average increase for the residential house was about 7% generally for the average. So an average residential property, for instance, last year was $270,000. This year, it increased to $288,000.
And are they, are they reassessed every year?
They are, yes. So we do, we go through a recertification process for the Department of Revenue. So the certification is every five years. However, we do, they do, every property in town gets reassessed every year. And those values are approved by the Department of Revenue every year. So we take an entire year of a market analysis and we do our in-house analysis. And then once we come up with all of our figures, we provide that to the Department of Revenue. And they go through everything with a fine tube comb and come back with any questions that may, they may have and make sure that we are within their guidelines.
And then, and then every five, if you go out to the house, or how often you go out to the house?
So for the house, so, so the, the recertification process with the Department of Revenue is every five years. And for the house, we are required to go out to every house at least once every 10
Any further questions or comments? You have to take four separate votes here?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, so the very first vote would be deciding on the minimum residential factor. Again, if the select would decide to adopt a factor of one, that would be in favor of a single tax rate. Adopting any factor of less than one, which would be a shift of up to 150% would result in a split tax rate. And then we have the open space discount voting on, and again, we have no properties in open space. We have, have the vote on the residential exemption and then the small commercial exemption. So each of those four votes are required in order to determine the levy and how it's borne between each property class.
Historically, we've always been one, one level, right?
I'm sorry?
Historically, we've always been one level? One rate?
We've never had a split tax rate before.
Yes, no, yes. Historically, it's been a, it's been a single tax rate. One more, one more thing I could mention now, in terms of how the residential class takes 85 to 90% of all of the property in town versus, you know, the 10 to 15% of commercial, industrial properties. So in order to keep those businesses in town, because of such the small number that we have, generally, the town chooses to go with a single tax rate.
So is it the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to go with a single tax rate and then to not adopt the other three options?
Correct, yes, that would, that would be the recommendation. I have the board members present as well, if they would like to speak at all, but that, based off of our conversation, yes, that would be our recommendation.
I'm pretty familiar with your board. I'm pretty sure they don't want to speak.
Yeah, that, that's, this is Norm Scharest. That's, that's pretty much what the town has been doing since I've been involved with the assessing office. We have such a small number of businesses that traditionally the selectmen have always chosen to just leave it a single rate rather than shift the big, or a part of the burden over to the businesses, which, as Kelly pointed out, I don't know if she pointed it out at this meeting, but sometimes the businesses, the property isn't owned by the business owner. So you, the tax increase goes to the, the property owner. The business owner may not see it, although they probably would see it in a rent adjustment. We have very, very few properties that would actually qualify for that. And they would take a heavier burden.
Yes. And one more thing I could point out, which is displayed in the, in the material that I had sent over underneath that, the chart that shows the percentage split, I did include some, some figures just to show the difference. For example, for a, to do a 125% shift would change the residential tax rate from 1967 to 1880. That would be a savings for each, for the residential property average of $250 for the year. And with that same shift, the impact it would have on the commercial, industrial, and personal property would be an increase in $3,129.12. And same thing, looking at it if, in terms of a 150% minimum residential factor, in doing so would save the average residential property $498.24, but would increase the commercial, industrial, personal property by $6,258.24. So it really does, it has a, a small savings for the residential, but quite a large impact on the commercial and industrial properties. So I believe that would be, that would be our recommendation, would be to stay with a single tax rate and adopt a minimum residential factor of one.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to keep the single tax rate for all tax classifications for the next fiscal year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion not to adopt the open space discount as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Chair, make a motion not to adopt the residential exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Mr. Chair, make a motion not to adopt the small commercial exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Aye. Could the assessors stay on? We want to discuss the tax workoff program.
Sure.
Okay, we'll sign this afterwards. So the tax workoff program, I think we have 10 slots. Typically, four at the senior center, two in the town hall, one at the fire department, and one in the library. And the maximum abatement for that is $1,500?
Correct. Yes.
How does that work? How does that program work?
So, so at this time, the, the, yes, the maximum number of participants can be, can be 10 participants. I do not believe that they've had that many positions or, or people available. I think, I believe Becky said they've had eight or nine the last couple of years. But yes, it's a, a maximum abatement of $1,500. That is based off of, we have to look at, at the, the new minimum wage each year because it has been increasing. So the, the hours are then adjusted to reflect, to make sure that it does not go over that $1,500. But basically, the program was put in place so that seniors could, could provide services in areas that they're familiar with or may have, you know, may have some background in to be able to work off a portion of their tax bills. And I, I believe it's been working out very well for, for quite a few people. I know as, as, when, a couple of years ago, I've spoken with a couple of residents that were involved, and I know that it was very helpful.
Is there an income requirement? I mean, is there an income minimum or?
So, no, so they have to meet certain requirements. And I'm sorry, I don't have all of that right here. I know that there is a residency requirement, they must own a property for a certain amount of time. I would have to look into that portion a little further for you. I'm sorry, that is not something that I, I had prepared here for tonight. But I can look at that to see if there's the income requirement.
But the program has been in existence for quite a while here.
It has, yes.
Motion to continue the tax workoff program through the assessors and the chair of the seniors.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, anything else?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
So the tax workup, we already talked about the highway, the transfer station. Board of Health varies on 23 Walnut Road, setback variance to set a well?
Yes, it's a setback for a well. The setback reduction from 63 feet, to 63 feet from 100 feet for the well, and it's recommended by the Board of Health. So I will just make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that motion. You're making the motion. I'll make a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion because you're the chair. Okay. Let's see, I move we accept the variance from 100 feet to 63 feet for the siting of a well at 23 Walnut Road, recommended by our public health authority.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Old Business. Dispatch update. Do you have something to report?
Yes. Some information has come in since the last meeting. I was asked to call the state 911 department to ask if they would fund the extension of the fiber optic line from Hampton to Wilbraham. We've had two estimates of that cost. I noticed Mr. Gentile has now joined the meeting. He might give us the latest estimate, but I believe it was in the range of 112,000. This is what the state 911 office said. They would be willing to fund it. They will fund it by increasing their grant to the town of Wilbraham. Temporarily, one-time shot of money, they'd be willing to fund it, provided that both towns would conclude an intermunicipal agreement and have it signed. They would insist on that, and they said they had had some bad experiences in the past with towns deciding to combine dispatch. And then they came out with the money to extend the fiber optic line. And then, in one instance, the, the agreement fell through and the towns had to pay it back over 10 years. So they want to make sure that if they're going to fund this, that there will be an actual consolidation of dispatch. The other matter that was a result of a phone call from the town administrator in Wilbraham to me, the discussion of what the fee would be. He said that the Wilbraham Board of Selectmen will ask for $125,000 plus, in successive years, succeeding years, the CPI. So it would be a slight, it would be a scale based on the CPI after the first year. I think that answers the questions, all the questions that were posed. So.
So in terms, in terms of the fee, they'll also be receiving our $26,000 PSAP money, right?
They will get the PSAP money from the town of Hampton, yes. And they expect 200, and he said to me, 256,000 as part of the deal. And in addition to that, the cost of extending the fiber optic line.
That'd be a one?
One year, a one-year fee. Yes. No. One year. So if you're asking what's in it for, I think the question was asked a while back, what's in it for Wilbraham? It is that the PSAP money plus the, the fee that, that Hampton would pay, or actually the state would pay in years after the first.
And I understand that the 125, like you said, Bob, the state would cover that for the first three years, plus, I'm sure, as you said before, if it was within reason, which it sounds like it would be, because it was similar to the, the Westcon.
Yes.
Number. I just wonder where that number came from. I saw it in a message from you. I did reach out to one of the Wilbraham selectmen, and they said, the number came from us. And I don't recall ever throwing a number out there, something like that. We threw, oh, we could start at 50 or something like that. And I, I really would like to go back to, not the table per se, but just ask, you know, what do they base that 125 on? As you said, they're making out pretty well if this is a program we're going with. They're getting an increase from the state and their grant money. They're getting our PSAP turned over, possibly a fiber upgrade by connecting to us, then plus our vendor number, if you will. So I really would like to get a sense of, you know, what that number was based on. Because I don't think any discussion, Don, I'm sure you didn't throw it in, no.
We've talked about, we've mentioned 100,000 because that's what Westcom would do. And I'm not too sure about the Consumer Price Index thing either. I would much rather, if we're, if there's some kind of, and I can understand the need for, for increasing, but I would much rather see it based on a percentage of the 911 calls. You know, I have sent along a few things where towns are based on their population, some are based on the 911 calls, some are based on a share of population and 911 calls. You know, and then if their costs increased, it would increase because we have a percentage of the 911 calls.
The Wilbraham administrator asked me, what do you think the selectmen in Hampton are willing to pay? And I said, I, they have an offer at Westcom for 100. I think that's probably. I think that's probably where they are, and he said our Selectmen are looking for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, we did not discuss the basis for that. Then we discussed the whole fiber situation.
Was there any discussion of the governing agreement?
Presumably, since there was no comment on that at all, what was submitted, what actually you submitted to them, the updated or modified governance agreement from the other consolidation that was, that Ayer and Shirley, that, that apparently is not a problem. It wasn't mentioned to me as a problem.
Well, they hadn't accepted it. There was a discussion a little when you were, and they thought it was cumbersome, and they figured something else.
They thought, they, they really, they really didn't, didn't give a specific. They talked about the chiefs of police and the fire chiefs and that type, or the select, directly to the Selectmen, but I haven't seen.
So, would, would you like me to set up another Zoom session with the Administrator, myself, and you and the Chair?
Yeah, Thursday, if we could do it Thursday.
Thursday.
If you go with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars fee, right, and they want us to pay, and you go with the two hundred and fifty-six, which is what they say the operating cost is, right, which you're going to get from the state, right, and you go with the twenty-six PSAP money, that's as much as we're spending right now. So, so, except that we're not spending it here, and they're getting it.
Well, they're getting, they're getting a, a bonus in that first year.
Of all, all online.
Yeah, they are, right.
So, I can see what's in it for them. I don't know what's in it for us.
Well, what's in it for us is we'll be saving three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Well, it's just, you know, I mean, the state's still paying it, and we're part of that, and we don't get the PSAP money here.
Right, but we're not paying the one twenty-five or the two fifty-six or?
No, we're not paying that. We are paying the one twenty-five.
We're paying, let's say.
Not the first three years.
Not the first three years.
Right, right. Over two hundred percent of a thousand.
I, I, I don't, I don't understand your point.
I'll, I'll clarify in my own head, and then I'll tell you again.
Well, well, I know, well, you have the, you have the nine, the 911 fund that everyone pays a dollar fifty on their cell phone or their landline, doesn't matter if it's cell phone or landline. So, then that money is what's you, is what's used for all these, that money is what, that money is what?
Sorry.
That, that money is what's used for paying all these regional, or giving fees to these regional, you know, whether it's us or Westcom or somebody else, okay? So, that's actually tax dollars coming back to us rather than going to someplace else, right? So, we would get, we would, the first three years, they would pay for our fee to whichever, whatever we decide to do, if we decide to do something. And then it'd be reduced up until five years. After five years, there'd be no more reduction of, no more state fund, so we know that for a fact. But even at that point, if we continue to pay a hundred and twenty-five, or if there's an inflation factor, or 911 percentage factor, we'd still be saving three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars a year from our current cost of dispatch.
All right. If, if that, given that, okay, and looking at the chart that you've gotten, the map that you've got in front of us.
Right.
It certainly looks like regionalization is coming to be. It's going to be, you know, if you look at the little circle down the bottom where we are, everybody around us, except Springfield and.
Yeah, the big, the big cities.
The big cities are regionalized, okay? And so, you would assume, I think, that this will be the move of the future. So, you have to decide, I, as part of the decision has to be, when is the time to make that move? Is that time to make that move now and go with Wilbraham, in which case it will only be two, two towns?
Or Westcom.
Or something else that has more, has more of the mass that is available. So, I think that's a concern, and I certainly, as I said before, think the concern of, of the, of the leadership of the group and the decision-making process and the role that we play in that process is very important to consider, because I think that we have to have a say in what's going on, and it has to be a strong say, and, you know.
Right, so, that's why I sent over the, I sent over to you that, that kind of Rutland Agreement there. And if you look at the Rutland Agreement, which those towns are, who are they? They're Barry Hubbardston, Oakham, Rutland, Warren, and somebody else there. They don't, they don't, they don't really have a say in that.
You said that, but I found that what it said in number five.
The five, but what's it say in the five? It says. That's Templeton, Philpstone. It says the, the under, under cost sharing agreement. Five is a budget estimate for the ensuing fiscal year based on Rutland's proposed operating budget, you know, using the population figure, and this is cost sharing contract agreement. Remember, operation, okay, operational procedure. Review of the dispatch center operations will take place semi-annually with the executive member towns' representatives to a board of stakeholders, generally the police and fire chief. Reviews will take place at any other time requested to address concerns regarding procedures or operations. The proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year will be presented and reviewed in the regular budget timeframe process. What about the police and fire chief? It's the police and fire chief.
To the board of, to the board of stakeholders.
Board of stakeholders, well.
Board of stakeholders, whoever they are.
Well, it'd be.
More than two or, it would be a Selectman person.
Maybe it could be, probably the Selectman, right, right. But they don't say that they get to vote on the budget, they say they get to see the proposed budget.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not word, it's worded permissively.
You know, you know.
But it's, it's the same as, it's the same as the original one we got before.
Right.
Which was permissive, you know, and you could see it, you could review it, but you couldn't make it.
You couldn't say no.
See it, you could review it, but you couldn't say no.
Right. And I think I gave you one, another one tonight, Philpstone and Templeton.
Yeah, you did.
That's where I got the, that's where I got the wording for the.
I saw that the wording was very similar.
Yeah, that's where I got the wording for the, the advisory board, or whatever you want to call it. So, in looking at, in looking at the map, I mean, you know, the options, well, and I think I said it before, like, you have Springfield, which, you know, we would have, we wouldn't have a lot of say there.
Springfield's not happening anyways.
And they're, well, they are going to build, or they are, they are building.
They're going to build a dispatch center, but they're not going to be.
Dispatch center, right?
I didn't think it was going to be regionalized.
And then Ludlow, which we've approached, but there showed little interest, and I might point out that one of our dispatchers in our town has resigned and is going to go work in Ludlow.
Ludlow said they were going to start, they said they were getting involved in dispatch, and that's why.
Yeah, they, they're, they're. One of our dispatchers resigned and will be going to Ludlow, and they have, they have another opening there. Palmer is looking at Westcom, where, I don't know what they're doing. The Sturbridge, Southbridge, Charlton, Spencer thing, they, they, all the chief and fire chiefs and, and police chiefs all agree, and Oxford all agreed that they wanted to combine in Oxford, but they never did because Southbridge was the place where they housed prisoners, they would arrest, they housed arrestees for that area, so they didn't want to give that up. They must get money from the state to do that, and Spencer was in the same situation. So, they, so Charlton and Sturbridge are looking for a third partner, or Oxford and Charlton are looking for a third partner, and that's been two years now. You know, then we get into Middlesex County, they just built a, you know, Foxborough, down here in Foxborough, which we could, we could go to the Patriots game, we could visit, we could visit the dispatch center and go to the Patriots game.
Like a field trip.
They have no tickets under fifty dollars.
Framingham, they just, they, State just awarded eight point two million dollars for Framingham to, to create a dispatch center for Framingham, Holbrook, and that area there. So, that's where we are in that.
So, it's clear, like you say, they are trying to make it, they're paving the path, if you will, paving the path for as many communities as possible to.
And then, and then.
And as you said before, do we take advantage now? Do we?
Does the money dry up as time goes on? Does, who knows?
Well, we have one comment that says savings are closer to two hundred thousand dollars after costs and union negotiations. We don't know that. It'll be, probably be closer to three hundred thousand, and even if it is two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand times five is a million, and I think that's a pretty good savings for the town.
It, it may indeed be a good savings.
We've asked East Long Meadow if they'd be interested in joining with us, they don't want to leave Westcom.
It may be a good savings, but I think that, I have been involved in making decisions based on money in the past that have not been successful.
I know, you said, you've, you've already said that you wouldn't vote for anything with Wilbraham, no matter how much money we save.
Exactly.
All right, so that's a no vote. Okay, so we record that duly recorded.
You can duly record it right now.
So, well, I think we should continue getting as much information we can until the decision date, which is November thirtieth, and Westcom is still going along, doing their thing.
Okay, and so, we should, we should look at more communities, you think, or we should, or we should just get more information, or you should have your meeting, or?
Well, I think we should have our meeting, we could look at other communities, but I don't know which one you want to look at. Look at the map.
I think you gave us, I think you, what you gave us was interesting, and I read it. I liked the map.
Look at the map and tell me, that's right.
Right, isn't that, that?
You know, and, and one of your concerns is that we have some control, and I don't see going to Springfield, Holyoke.
No, usually you have to have communities of the same size.
Williams Town is a little bit far away for us, all the technology that could do it. We could look at, Palmer's, I know, is looking at Westcom seriously. I mean, we're getting landlocked here.
What's been the recap, I mean, how long is that one? Look how huge that one is.
Yeah. I think that's running smoothly. Same thing with Berkshire County, everything's out of the sheriff's office in Berkshire County, and on the Cape, everything is out of the sheriff's office as well, most of those towns down there.
There are success stories.
There are a lot of success stories, yeah. And even, I even went into a look and see what was going on in Connecticut, I don't know why, but.
Case you move.
So, case I move.
Run away.
So, Summers, Summers, Stafford, dude, there's like fifteen or sixteen towns that are, are out of the Talon regional, according to Summers, Stafford, Union, East Windsor, Ellington, so that's what they're doing in Connecticut.
And theirs supposedly works well, because I was in, I used to be in Stafford, and they were satisfied. I mean, they weren't complaining.
Right, so, we'll set up the meeting, Bob? We'll do that?
I'll set the meeting up for Thursday.
Okay, all right.
Overtime for you.
Overtime for you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the capital planning discussion.
So, I've reached out, reached out to our committee, trying to find a, a good date for all of us. There is one advantage, that some of those who do work, and now with the current environment, we're probably going to have a Zoom meeting, so it'll work out that we will have a daytime meeting. It was always difficult in the past to get everybody to pick one evening that was good for everyone, so we hope to line that up and really work with, we've had some good discussion on the board, Mari Ellen and Don, about what our goals are for capital planning, and come back with that, and then be able to recap, maybe even bring everybody in for a Zoom meeting with the board.
Okay, now, the capital planning committee, it was in, is in Churcot and?
Those are the people who reached out, though.
Okay, and then, when Rick Green came in, am I not working?
Well, it doesn't share anything. Oh, am I, am I, I don't know, but anyways, when Rick Green came in, does he have a committee that's a separate committee? Remember, he said I will come back with a plan of some sort, I will, I will look into this and.
I think it was more of like, from the business group, like, can we be involved as well?
So, are those, those are two separate committees, or they're together, or?
No, he was just, he was just volunteering.
Okay.
He wasn't part of the capital planning committee, but he was volunteering. His expertise, obviously, many years on the board, many years in the business community.
Yeah, I know, and he had some ideas, and he was, you know, talking, and then he said, well, I'll go out and get a, I'll think about, I'll talk to some of these guys again and try to get ourselves organized.
Yeah, with Don Collins, those.
And then, will this be open to other people? Because I do have had people that said to me, I want to be on the capital planning.
Well, we don't want to be too big. I mean, right now, we added that a little while ago, so, as you've said in the past, too big a committee is very cumbersome, so.
Yeah, but I hate, if, have you received any requests to be on the capital?
I have not.
You have not? Okay, well, okay, so then, if you haven't had enough motivation to send in a letter.
And to be honest, we keep talking about different committees. I don't think Bob has been inundated with people throwing their hands up, but there are, there are some. There are people that do approach me, I know, approach you and said, look, put me in a spot, you know, put me in, coach, you know, I'm ready to go, just like the song, so.
Well, at least if you post the meetings, or if you tell us, we're going to have a meeting this week, then we can get the word to those people that have an interest, and they can go to the meetings.
And hopefully, at some point, the doors are open, and we can have people just attend meetings. That would be so much easier.
Right, and also to review, to review the makeup of the committee and be sure that it has the different constituency groups represented on it, you know, so, so we have a parent, or we have a, we have a, and I think Batula was on it, as I saw, I got it wrong.
Yeah, there are actually younger people than me on it as well, so that's good, yeah, so.
Selectment reports? That was, okay, okay. Town Administrator's report?
When we held the ambulance oversight committee meeting, one of the members of the committee, Donna Hatch, wanted to review each paragraph of the contract to make sure that Action Ambulance was in compliance, and we did that on November the eleventh with two officials at action, and I can report that they are in compliance with all sections of the contract. We did decide to make minor modifications to that contract. For example, when we were initially discussing with them, our ambulance service was overseen by the police chief, and then the Selectmen decided to give, make, make the primary contact person for Hamden the fire chief, so we need to change that, which I've already done, and I'm going to be sending you a copy of the update by email, and we'll have it on the agenda for next week. Just minor modifications, but this will ensure that the contract reflects what's actually going on. Solar projects, you're up to date on the concerns there. We still have not had a report from Mass Fish and Wildlife regarding the endangered species and the mitigation requirement. We don't know. DUA fraud, that's a Division of Unemployment Assistance. There is very significant fraud across the state, including in the town of Hamden. I am, when I discover something that doesn't look cricket, I report it to the DUA. We actually had, they actually, the people who are doing this actually put our town treasurer on the list of people claiming, claiming an unemployment benefit, and there are some others who are in the, on the town payroll and in town boards and commissions whose names appear, and you just have to let the DUA know, and, you know, they take care of it. The Collins Institute, which is doing the classification and compensation study for the town, met with town employees last Thursday and also today, and as you're aware, there are a few, very few, who did not submit the job forms, and that's going to be done also. They're going to be working with them as well, but they're not on the list for Thursday or today. I did get a call from Representative Ash's staff person asking if we want any earmarks in the federal, in the state budget, which is now being reviewed in the legislature. I'm not optimistic about this, but I did say that we could always use some money to continue the work with dead trees and dangerous trees in the public way.
If you could also mention the fact that we are going to be underfunded on our highway building expansion.
Highway building.
We'd be happy to name the building after Representative Ash, if that's all it takes.
Yeah, yes, by all means. Given that the Commonwealth's operating budget is underwater by, I think, three and a half billion, I'm not expecting any year. I'm not expecting any earmarks this year, but maybe there'll be a surprise.
Oh, Joe.
Yeah, yeah. There will be a meeting tomorrow morning between the highway superintendent, the architect for the building, myself, and Selectman Flynn to review the garage expansion project and what modifications are necessary to bring it within budget or what we think would be within budget when we re-advertise for it. And also winter storm regulations. That is the report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the board?
Well, I will bring up a few new goals. Is this, is goal was there?
Yeah, we have that.
I must be on another.
I thought you had that on for, we had.
Yes, yes.
21st.
28th, yeah.
Okay, so maybe before then, we want to each.
I'm sorry, 21st, you are right, 21st.
For discussion, is that a good way to do this? To say, think about.
21st, yes.
December 21st.
To be next week, right?
No, December 21st.
December 21st.
Okay, then we don't have to do that right now. But I think that maybe before we, before we have that meeting, we should each try to draft something that we think might be a good way to go and so on and so on, along the same line.
Well, I was going to suggest that to complement that, I could meet with department heads and also discuss a few overarching goals for each department for the coming fiscal year. That would be consistent with what the Selectmen are trying to accomplish. And if you have ideas for what you'd like to see happen, let me know. And I, you know, I think we could, since we're trying to upgrade HR, we could gradually move towards that kind of system, that kind of system where, you know, you base, have an incentive system where you, where you base compensation in part upon accomplishing some agreed-to goals.
Or even if you don't tie, even if you don't tie salary to it, you can certainly do annual evaluations and reviews and, you know, strengths and weaknesses and all that kind of stuff. It's always helpful for everybody here.
Tough to do that kind of compensation thing when you have a budget voted 18 months before. Good thought, meeting with the different departments under our purview and probably a rule, rather than for you, is for the liaisons that we've appointed, you know, to meet with those different departments. You know, who's got police, who's got fire, who's got highway? Go over the goals, and then the liaison will bring that back into board. Okay, I met with the fire department, these are the goals. I met with the police department, these are the goals I want to bring back to the board. It really is, I think, the job of the liaison of the board to do that.
Well, and the other way is, I think we should have our goal first and then have them develop their goal to fit into our goal and get additional goals if they want. But, I mean, you can't, you know, we have to have the vision, and then they feed up into the vision.
Yeah, over and above day-to-day management.
Right, right.
You know, what, few, very few.
Right, one, two.
If there are too many, that it really gets confused. But a few big overarching goals for each department.
Right, and it's a way for us, if we set a goal, to just to evaluate our performance for the year, for the period of time. All right, we did well, these are the four things we wanted to accomplish, the two things we got them both done, for us, you know, for.
Well, you're actually doing that in one case. I mean, I have the goals that were set at the beginning of the fiscal year, which I was looking at today. We were more or less pretty much up to date, yeah, yeah.
Anything else to come before the board? Want to do a adjourn? All in favor?
Thank you, everyone, for coming.